Call the meeting back to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening, everybody. I get approval of the minutes of the meetings held April 23rd and May 2nd, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose same sign. Any persons wishing to address the board? Nope, thank you Bev. Alright, can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Bless you. Alright, on to the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. One of the pieces we hear from new hires and veterans alike is that one of the perks of being an employee in the Sioux Falls School District is the wonderful professional development that is available to all employee groups in the district. And we have an exciting opportunity this summer in that we are hosting a summer symposium, and Dr. Teresa Boyson is here to tell us a little bit more about those professional development opportunities for not only our staff but surrounding teachers as well.
Thank you. Good evening. We do have a great opportunity for all staff this summer on June 20th and 21st. We are having, we're hosting the summer symposium, and the symposium, I'll speak in the microphone, there we go. The symposium is focused around professional development for classroom teachers, but also educational assistance for anybody else that would like to join us. We are bringing Solution Tree in, and Solution Tree will be focusing on the following five topics. Collaboration and really working on building that team and through that collaborative process. Mark Johnson will be our keynote speaker on June 20th, and then he'll follow up with some breakout sessions around collaboration and that deep understanding for teaching and learning. And then we have other breakout sessions on response to intervention, RTI, developing the strategies to support students who are struggling and those non-motivated students. We have social and emotional and trauma on the docket, and that's an area of interest that we've heard from staff. So identifying those signs and symptoms of trauma, teaching coping skills, and then pro-social communication supports for goal-setting through, for students. And then the next one is described as "The New Art and Science of Teaching" by Marzano. That's his new book, and it's taken Hattie's top effect sizes, and Marzano put it together, and so they said it's Marzano on steroids. And so we're very excited for that. And the enrollment, it's one of our top courses that, or the sections that they have enrolled for. And the last one's culturally responsive practices. Sharaki Holly is our keynote speaker on June 21st, and then he'll have two breakout sessions. And it's really working on discussing how our biases can be, impact good, the good intentions or what we intend for student achievement. So it's two days filled with professional development, and we're very excited to bring that opportunity to the Sioux Falls School District. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, moving on. Any conflicts of interest this board meeting? Okay, didn't see any. Can I get an approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Can I get a motion for the supplemental consent agenda? Items 11A, claims, A1 through 5, claims to Sanford.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. That motion passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Can I get a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda? Items 11B, went through two, claims to Avera.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. And that passes with one abstention from myself. Alright, moving on to the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you. We have two reports tonight. The first report is the Program Enhancement Project Proposal Grant, better known as the PEP Grant Report. That comes from Curriculum Services, and tonight will be presented by Sonia Sotomayor, Principal Tracy Veek, and maybe assisted by Jill Vetris.
Yep.
Okay, glad to have you here.
Yes, thank you. As you said, my name is Tracy Veek and Jill Vetris, who is a teacher and instructional coach. So she's teaching out at George McGovern. We've been the co-chairs of the Program Enhancement Grants for quite a while now. I think I've been a co-chair for 10 years. I've been on it for 14 years, and I love this. And she said she's been on there longer than that, but we couldn't add up fast enough. So, the Program Enhancement Grants have been around for, I think we just, thank you. They are a negotiated agreement between the Sioux Falls School District and the Sioux Falls Education Association. They have been around for over 30 years, and for those 30 years, they've given a budget of $10,000 annual out of our Curriculum Services budget to allow teachers to apply for $1,200 The funding criteria is an involvement of community resources, including people, a program involving people from several different disciplines, evidence of increasing individualization or personalization of education, evidence of increasing involvement of students in their own learning, any other approaches that are well justified. We do not, through these grants, you cannot apply for staff salary or compensation, any consumables, or individual technology items that are valued over $500 each. All of the grants must be approved by the building principal, and the grants must align to what's in the school improvement plan or what the mission of that building is. The committee participation is four Sioux Falls School District teachers who are SFEA members. They're appointed by the president, or they're voluntold. Two elementary teachers, one middle school teacher, and one high school teacher, and then the superintendent and/or his designee assigns four administrators to the committee. Two elementary, one middle, and one high school. This year, we had 22 applicants with funding requests that totaled $19,705.74. We were able to fund grants, 20 different grants, with a total of $9,997. Some of the grants that were applied for, Jill's going to take over from here, but some people may have asked for $1,200, but we always ask them if we're, we have a lot of grants, and would you take partial payment? We've never been told no on the partial payment. Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
So, one of the grants that we provide some money for was Lisa over at Garfield, and she wrote a grant to get some high-low reader books for her ELL students. And what those are is chapter books that look like a book like any student would be reading, but the Lexile level is right at their level, so they are, can be in a classroom, they're reading, and they're high interest and motivating for the students to read. Sarah, oh, this is great, over at Rosa, she bought ukuleles! I mean, how fun, that's so her kids were working on working together, learning music, collaborating, and just how to get along and help each other out. They really were able to teach each other different things. Charlene over at Discovery bought some goggles for the virtual reality, so her classroom has just expanded to wherever the kids want to go, whatever they're learning about. Great for building the background knowledge for kids that maybe haven't been certain places, and just really help to engage them in what they're learning. Letitia has breakout boxes, and so just like the escape room that you can go to, in the classroom, there's problems that they solve, and when they get their solution, they're going and opening up a lock, which gets them to new problems, so collaboration, all those different skills that we, 21st century skills that we want our children to be exposed to, they're getting it right there. Chrissy in kindergarten has a table that's lights up, so again, just super engaging for those kids to be able to learn, and as a, as a great station for them to be learning about their letters and whatever they're doing with all the cups there. Yeah. Amy out at McGovern, she's working with the sixth graders, and they are learning how to use these STEM and different types of apparatuses that they have, and then they are learning how to go and teach the elementary students out at Renberg. So a great little pilot project that's going on there, and they're excited about continuing that. So now she's going to be able to buy many different gadgets and gizmos that they need to be using. Janet at Lincoln created a, with her Native American Connection students, they've created a wonderful newsletter that they, so she, they purchased a camera so they could add art to their Native American Connection newsletter, and it's pretty good stuff.
Oops, sorry.
You skipped over, oh, there's one more. Oh, I don't know what happened. So Amanda, she's at my school, so I got to talk about her. So they have flexible seating, so Amanda teaches students that are newcomers, so they, she bought some bike, pedal bikes, some standing tables, some little discs that the kids can sit on and bounce, and then balls, flexible balls that they can sit on too, just to keep them engaged, and some of our students aren't used to sitting from wherever they came, from the refugee camps that they came to, so they love to have that to get a little movement and engagement going. Here's a list of all the different projects that were proposed, and it's a wonderful committee to be on, the ideas, it's just amazing what's going on in the district.
One of the fun things, Peggy Bailey, she has applied for this grant every single year, and she's been in four different schools since, maybe five?
Yeah.
And she gets books, no matter which, which school she's at, she always gets books for the kids in that school, so that's been kind of a fun thing. We always know that the grants are not complete unless we've seen Peggy. And so we appreciate the fact that she shares the wealth among all of those buildings. The purpose of our report is just to inform the board of the Program Enhancement Grants. They are a lot of fun to listen to, for sure, and it lets teachers get creative in a simple way in their classrooms, so it's just going to acknowledge the report. So, yeah, thank you.
So thank you for the funding and all that stuff, paper. It's truly appreciated.
Definitely. Thank you. Any questions for Tracy or Jill?
What time of year do you guys do your grant applications and awards?
We send them out in December, and then they, they have one night of a hearing, so they actually have to come in and give a presentation, and we do all of them in one evening. And they do a seven-minute presentation in January, and then we have eight minutes to ask questions, clarifying questions for them, so 15 minutes tops.
Awesome. So then they know if they want, if they don't get funding, for example, they can go to Sioux Falls Education, to the foundation, too.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
I was hoping the timing was good on that.
Yep, they're at different times.
And then also they can get the materials, and they can start to use them right away.
The $10,000 that we have budgeted, how long have we been at the $10,000 amount?
At least 18 years.
At least 18 years. And our enrollment 18 years ago, and number of teachers, let me think.
So very similar, very similar.
Well, if I get lucky enough to be on the Budget Committee again next year, we might review that amount. Would that be okay?
That'd be awesome.
We would take whatever amount you'd be willing to give. That would be okay.
We'll, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine being on the committee, just how fun it must be to be able to award these grants, and, you know, for the teachers that are going above and beyond in their classrooms, this is just another great example, so, thank you.
Pam sat on it at the last minute this year, and she said, "If I'd have known about this earlier, I'd have been sitting on this all these years," right? It was a lot of fun.
I would have done that before, but after a long term.
It's a lot of fun, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, can I get a motion in a second to approve the Program Enhancement Project Proposal Grant Report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Alright, moving on.
Our next report is a report that is done every five years. The South Dakota Department of Education comes in and puts together a comprehensive visit to go through our accreditation process, and this was our year. Leading the visit from our side was Dr. Boyson, and here to report on that visit is Dr. Boyson.
It was our year, and I said, "What a great year to start," right? And we have the accreditation, but it really was a great visit from the Department of Education into the district, and it really affirms the great things that are going on here that we sustain and keep going. So the purpose of my report tonight is to inform you of the South Dakota Department of Ed's accreditation review of our practices, and to recertify and have our accreditation certificate. The district priority area is fiscal accountability and systems management. If we look back, we got a letter June 1st, 2017, saying that they were going to be onsite in April, and that seemed like a long time away, but it came very quickly, and prior to their visit, Becky Dorman and myself, we talked to the accreditation office and the expectations, and they worked, we talked through the process and what would have to happen, and they opened up the portal, and we, for the 19 compliance areas and the documents that we would have to upload prior to their visit. So all districts seeking accreditation have to host this visit every five years, and it follows the administrative rule 2443, which outlines the processes to maintain accreditation, but also it's there to aid the districts in that comprehensive school improvement along the process. So they're there to help us and support us, and we appreciate that. So then when we look at the 19 different compliance areas that, that they lends into our district, we had to upload 2,900 documents prior to their visit, and a large number of those were birth certificates and immunizations. They randomly select, we just have to verify that we have those documents. They looked at, with Becky Dorman and the Human Resources Department, the documents that we keep safe for, for making sure that we have qualified people on staff. Few other areas, graduation requirements, documentation on our end that we offer those courses every two years. The strategic plan was a big one, and that's their top school improvement, how do we continually look at that process? And we submitted the strategic plan as the district's school improvement plan, and they were very complimentary on that, because it includes all those components, and every building school improvement plan builds to that. They also looked at the teacher evaluation process, and examples of those evaluations, our handbooks, the student learning outcomes, the SLOs that are done by the district, and looking for those processes in place. And here's another, the rest of it, the bullying policy, birth certificates, personal learning plans, all those documents were uploaded ahead of their visit, and then they were onsite April 9th and 10th. And while they were here, there were two teams, and the one team started at, well, they both started IPC, and they visited with Becky Dorman, myself, Dr. Knold, and we looked at the site files here, and then they dispersed out into eight elementaries, two middle school and two high school, and while they were there, they were looking at emergency plans, our drill processes, and then they looked at student files to make sure we're collecting the documents that we need to when they're enrolling. The other team visited with Dr. Knold and myself about the teacher and principal evaluations, and our processes involved in that, and then they verified what we told them while they were out in the building, and visited three elementary buildings, two middle and two high, and each building they interviewed a teacher and the principal on those processes involved. It was a great visit, warm welcomes that they received at every building. They said the buildings were organized, it was easy for them to get in, identify themselves, and get to work with what they needed to do. They were on a tight schedule, especially the building that had all the file reviews they were running. I don't think they realized how many buildings and how you get from one place to the other. They ended their meeting on April 10th down here with a team of us, just to talk about what they found, and the exit meeting and the written report from the Department of Ed was very complimentary. Detailed level of information was provided prior to the visit, and the 19 campus visits were organized and welcoming to the accreditation team, making it easy for them to complete their file checks and interviews with teacher and principal. The following information was communicated with the district during the exit meeting and their written report. And I'll just, a few of the highlighted areas, the birth certificates and immunization records, they recognize the movement that we have within the district, and that, just making sure that, you know, all our files just transfer very easily, and they recognize that, and the organization it takes to keep track of 24,000 students, and all of their records. And they also recognize a unique need for different types of documentation that we have to take in Sioux Falls for our students, and they looked at that, you know, the I-94 cards, the green cards, the letters of resettlement that we take, and they all meet their standards and requirements. And then the strategic plan, the improvement of student learning, they reviewed the district's strategic plan, and again, every school's school improvement plan feeds up into that, and it's a good process for continued improvement for the district. We look at teacher evaluation, they commented on that the district was well organized, evaluation plans and processes where the principals focus on getting into the classrooms continuously. It's evident that the teachers, as well as administrators, appreciate the drop-ins, and that's the one thing that they said, all the teachers said, they love the feedback that they get from the principals, and they welcome them and wish they could get in there more. And through our process, they are in there at least four times a year, so that they're getting that feedback during that time. And the Department of Ed also commented, "It's impressive how much principals actually do get into the classroom." And so that tells me that they recognize the efforts on our building administration to get in there. Principal evaluation, the principals appreciate the school visits, these are commented through the Department of Ed, the principals appreciate the school visits by the superintendents and the feedback they receive. They also value the goal-setting meetings that we hold to help them develop their goals for their building, and both personally and professionally, to meet the building needs and the district goals. The Department of Ed also liked the background checks and the certified staff records, they said they're well organized, maintained, and easy for them to collect the information they needed. Content standards, we had to upload content standards from multiple areas, and they demonstrated the course alignment, the state content standards, and the depth of knowledge assessment and detailed process for review and adoption procedures from beginning to end. And then open enrollment, bullying policy, privacy of student records, district policies and practices are detailed and communicated to all stakeholders. There was one area that needed some corrective action, and that was, we had three staff members on the online courses who were teachers of record, where their certification didn't reflect that, and so, working with the staff and Human Resources Department to make sure that we have that in our high schools, it's in the learning centers, and there's multiple teachers in there. So we do have a teacher that is certified in that area, but the teacher of record wasn't the same one, and the other was working through, two of them were working through Ombudsman, and we contract that service, but they'd like to see, "How do we record those teachers as part of Sioux Falls?" And so again, working with Becky Dorman to make sure that they're recorded through the state system as employees, not Sioux Falls employees, but they're working onsite through a contracted service. So that's how, the corrective, the one area that we need to work on, and we have a plan of action, and once that process is complete, we will be issued our certificate for accreditation for the next five years, will take us through 2022, 23. So out of the 18 of 19 areas, we met compliance in all, the Department of Education was very complimentary, and our processes, our policies, our curriculum writing, and developing exemplary systems to make sure that the students in the Sioux Falls School District are receiving the best education. And I would ask that you acknowledge the report, and I'll stand by for any questions.
I just want to thank you all and your staff, and staff of the district for providing the information and doing such a great job to allow us to be accredited. I know this is a lot of work, a lot of extra work outside of what you're normally having to do, so we appreciate all of this time and effort for this.
There's, you know, it's a great team, everybody was involved, and, and again, it's getting the documents uploaded, and everything was there, you know, so that again speaks to the policies, the practices that we do in Sioux Falls every single day.
Any questions for Dr. Boyson? Okay. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the state accreditation review?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, as we talked about with the, the special ed review a few weeks ago, I, it's got to be nerve-wracking to have, you know, the State Department of Education come into the schools interviewing, so even though we know we're doing a fantastic job, it's always, you know, it's, it's got to be hard, so same as what Cynthia said, just appreciate all the hard work that goes into, you know, these kind of reviews, and thankfully, the results were good, and we'll just be able to wait out five more years until they come back.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have one question. I, I heard Dr. Boyson refer to one of our staff persons as Dr. Knold, twice.
I didn't know who that was.
Yeah, and I didn't know for sure.
Well, I was going to save that for the end of the meeting, but I guess we could do it now. Congratulations to our newly appointed, newly earned, Dr. Jamie Knold.
We've got this eight.
Not that kind of doctor, Todd.
Not that kind of doctor.
Not that kind of doctor.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations, again, I know a lot of hard work goes into that, and so, good for you. Alright, we will move on to the policies.
Do you vote?
Oh, sorry. Alright, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Alright, now moving on to policies. We have second reading of three policies. We have policy regulation, policy and its accompanying regulation, JJAA, school activity rules, policy JJID and its accompanying regulation, student physicals for school athletics, and policy JKA, corporal punishment and crisis intervention. These policies were out for first reading, and we didn't receive any comments on any of these, so I move to approve the second reading and amend these policies and regulations.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Just have a quick question about the, and this isn't in the policy specifically, but when we change it from a triennial to a biennial, that goes into effect in like July 1st of this school year? Would that be correct? Is it July 1st of the year, or is it right now? And how does that impact incoming freshmen going into high school this year, and when they would have to have that? For the, for the physicals for high school students who are, if we change it from a triennial to a biennial, how does that impact, like, when does it go into effect, and what is the first group that that would be impacted by as far as going from through three years? Okay.
Yeah, it'll be incoming freshmen will be the first affected group.
So they would be freshman and junior, as, when they would be required?
Some could be that as a middle school student, or some of those would maybe have to be staff.
Sure. So anybody who's currently on the triennial would get the three years, or everybody then will be required to renew? I just feel like there will be some questions about that, so if we don't know that now, I think that's okay, but...
Well, I think it, I think it's a good question. Well, I think it, I think it's a good question. And what it tells me is we're going to need to put together some information to talk about those questions in transition, because you've got me a little bit confused, not from your question so much, but from our regulations. So I think we're going to have to put together a document that says, "Here's what the implementation will look like."
Okay.
And I don't think, I don't think it'll be, I don't know that you said this, but I don't think it'll be a grandfather situation.
That was kind of my question, yeah.
Such, such that if you're on the triennial now, you'll stay on that. I don't think that's the case, but we'll, we'll dig further into that and, and provide that explanation.
Thank you. Good question. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.